Mentioned, I'll basically avoid any kind of health concerns. That sounds like it's more of a legal matter and more of an issue with FCC not with AT&amp;T. And then in regards to the fire concerns and soil concerns and other concerns, just like any other company, we go through county codes. County knows their area, they have codes for every specific area that they're in agricultural, commercial, industrial. So we go through all their codes and we go through all their building codes, state codes. And we follow all that across the board. So I don't think any of that would be or should be an issue. In regards to the fire station, I'm not sure where that information comes from. We are co-located on several fire stations throughout Southern California. Usually the only time they don't allow is because there's not enough room on the tower where we will be interfering with their frequencies. They have their own frequencies that they disperse throughout that area. In regards to, I guess, coverage in the southeast corner that was mentioned, there's already a cell site down in that area. So that area is already covered. So that building area will be covered already by an AT&amp;T site that's already in that area. Just wanted to bring that up. That Thomas did show on his map earlier. And that's pretty much, I think that covers mostly everything. If there's any other questions that you guys have for me, I'd be happy to speak on it. I have Jessica Borders here. I have Erin as well. If they want to speak up, looks like we have about three minutes. But that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hi, this is Aaron Schenk. Can you hear me?
Yes, are you with the applicant?
Yes, I'm counsel for AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Very briefly, Chair Parks Supervisors, thank you for hearing us today. Two quick issues in rebuttal. The first is that under the Telecommunications Act, forty-seven USC three thirty-two C seven B, the county cannot take action on the application based on alleged health effects for radio frequency emissions. AT&amp;T has shown compliance with the FCC rules. That rule is whether the complaints are direct, like health effect complaints, or indirect, like property value complaints. The property value reports in the record are by and large based on concerns over radio frequency emissions. You can imagine that there shouldn't be property value problems diminishing property values due to a stealth facility put in away from residents. The second issue I just wanted to point out, the radio frequency maps, this is a 4G LTE build. And that's what the maps show, that they're not broadband, they're 4G LTE wireless service. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions on this for the applicant or the appellant? I would like to ask one to the applicant, and that is, it's a tall wireless facility tower. And I'm wondering, they just down the road, there's some really tall poles at the recreation area. And our county's emphasis is to co-locate where you can. Have you made an attempt to co-locate on existing poles at that park?
Joshua, I think that's for you.
Yeah, we have. And can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so the city doesn't allow us to be on top of those. I'm assuming you're referring to the stadium lights in the park?
Oh, yes, stadium lights. They're very tall.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, twenty-five feet is the maximum height in that area.
Okay, so to me, that's something that the city could waive their rules, for example, to avoid having this antenna over here if that were their choice, seems to me.
If I can show the map, it's actually right next to the school as well. So I think the city would be even more, yeah, the city would be extremely against that idea.
Well, I think of them as being right along the freeway. You know, so at any rate, I'm glad that you tried for that. To me, that seems like a better solution than building another tall tower in that area when one is already, several are already there. So with that, I'll go ahead. I don't see any other questions for our.
I had a question for AT&amp;T about the 4G. Can I ask a question to AT&amp;T about the 4G tower?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. We've heard from both sides, and now we will have an opportunity for our board to enter in discussions or ask questions of our staff, and then go into a decision. And I see that Supervisor Long had her hand up. Is that right?
Yes, I do understand both sides and the need for the community. I was wondering if asking our staff if there was possibility for the applicant to waive the both fees of the $2,000. I think we've done that in a hearing before, and so I'm wondering if we would be.
What we do is the policy, and I'll be glad to turn it to staff, but our policy is if you are successful in your appeal, then the board can choose to refund your appeal fees. But I don't think it.
I think we've done it in the past where we have been able to, so that's why I wanted to ask.
We'll ask our staff, say what the policy is. Does our staff have an answer to that question?
Chair Parks, thank you. Jeff Barnes, County Council's office. You correctly stated what the the rule is on appeals fees it set forth in your board's approved rate and fee schedule for the planning division. And basically, in order to recoup fees from an appeal, an appellant has to be at least partially successful in the subject hearing. And the policy also doesn't allow a refund of appeal fees for a previous appeal hearing. So here, there was a request for your board to refund the appeal fees for the planning commission. And so that would not be allowed under the policy that was approved by your board.
And then some. Go ahead Supervisor Long.
Thank you. I just wanted to finish my question is that I understand that's the policy, but is there any time on which we can do an exception?
It's a policy, so it could be waived by your board. If your board wants to have a more explicit exception, then we should probably revisit the policy itself. But the general rule is that any policy of your board can be waived by your board if that's your pleasure.
Thank you. That's what I was asking.
And then as Supervisor Long had stated, she was in the understanding that at one time there was an appellant who lost their appeal, but still got their appeal fees back. I recall one, I think that might have been that they won part of that appeal, but not others. But has there been a case where an appellant lost and on their appeal and still received their appeal fees back?
I'm not aware of that happening. I've been doing land use hearings since 2012. It's not ringing a bell, but I'll be the first to admit I don't have a perfect memory. So I'm not remembering that one.
You don't have a perfect memory?
Far from it.
Mm-hmm. I don't either, but I think we have to realize there's some precedent when we change this policy. Because I think one of the reasons is to make sure that we are able to recoup what we can and that we don't encourage appeals when I think that's basically it's not to encourage appeals too. Because it does take up staff time. Supervisor Ramirez?
That was going to be my question, and Mr. Barnes answered it. Though I still think that we might, I might want to ask us to consider waiving the fees at least for this current appeal. But I'll wait till I hear from my colleagues. Thank you.
And are there any other questions at this time? Well, I guess it's an assumption that, you know, they may win their appeal. And then they would get their feedback and.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Just so I'm clear, has there have been two separate $1,000 appeals fees paid so far for the appeals? Is that correct, Mr. Barnes?
That's correct unless planning wants to jump in and say something different. That's my understanding, yes. A thousand dollars for each separate appeal hearing.
Thank you.
All right, and then Supervisor Long and Supervisor Ramirez.
Thank you. The other question I just had is really that we are precluded from turning this CUP down based on the microwave concerns, correct?
That's correct, and I have considered the arguments to the contrary by appellant regarding the Fair Housing Act. And I don't believe that those arguments are valid in this specific permitting context.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, then, if there are no other questions, do we have any other? Mindy Fogg, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you Chair Parks. But I know you're about to enter the motion. And if the motion would be to approve the project, I wanted to insert that the applicant was saying they could design the facility to be a multiple trunk facility per the city's request, but that is not currently in our plans. So if there is a motion entertained, perhaps it could add that the plans reflect the three-trunk eucalyptus facility as shown by the applicant, and we can make that change.
And you don't see any issue with that as from any other perspective, planning-wise? No? That's just simply a design as, okay. I'll take that, then. You are right, I'm going ahead to close our hearing, enter into a potential motion on this item.
I'll make that motion in regard to approving the project with the modifications to reflect the three trunk eucalyptus tree as stated by the applicant. I'll make that one first.
Okay, we have a motion to, I guess, is actually approving the project and denying the appeal after we've considered the environmental document, correct?
And I was going to include, based on the pandemic and the circumstances, to waive the 2,000 for the appellant to pay it back. But I'll put that in a different motion. That way it's clear.
Okay, and is the motion correct the way we have it, this first motion, Mr. Barnes?
I think it would be a better, little bit better to say that the motions to approve staff's recommended actions with the revised project description to reflect the three-trunk faux-eucalyptus.
Right, so that would be a positive motion.
That would be then my motion. Thank you for.
Motion is Bob Huber.
And you're seconding it Supervisor Huber?
Correct, yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Levere.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes. That passed unanimously. And now to the request by the appellant to receive their both appeal fees, I guess, appeals to the planning commission and appeals to the Board of Supervisors. And Supervisor Long, you're saying that because of the hardships of the pandemic?
Yes, so that would be my motion. Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Could we please have the roll call?
Supervisor Levere.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez. Supervisor Ramirez. I think you're muted.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Thank you, and that concludes this hearing. We still have more to come. But in the meantime, we're going to take a quick recess so we can go to our 2:30 Air Pollution Control Board meeting, and then be back at 4:00 PM for our last hearing of the day. And I believe the link is the same that we're on right now. So if we just hang on there, we'll enter the rest of the Air Pollution Board onto this meeting.
Okay, I have Board Member Edmonds.
I'm here.
Board Member Huber. Board Member Huber. Board Member Levere.
Here.
Board Member Long.
Here.
Board Member Parks.
Here.
Board Member Pollock.
Asa.
Board Member Ramirez. Board Member Ramirez. Board Member Rollins.
Here.
Board Member Zaragoza. I see Zaragoza.
Roll call already?
Yes, are you here? Board Member Ramirez, are you present for this meeting?
I am.
Thank you. And Board Member Huber? Is not, okay. And Board Member Zaragoza, are you with us?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So it looks like we are only missing Board Member Huber. Chair Blatts?
I'm here as well.
I'm here, Huber. I'm here.
Thank you Supervisor Huber. Looks like everybody is present.
All right, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag. America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. Well, individual. All right, moving on. Thank you, everyone. Item number four, minutes of the meeting of the Air Pollution Control Board held Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
This is Matt. I'll move the minutes.
All right, Supervisor Levere.
I'll second. I'm Pollock.
And Mr. Pollock, do you have a roll call vote?
Board Member Edmonds.
I'll abstain as I was unfortunate.
Board Member Huber.
Yes.
Board Member Levere.
Yes.
Board Member Long.
Yes.
Board Member Parks.
Yes.
Board Member Pollock.
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez.
Yes.
Board Member Rollins.
Yes.
Board Member Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Blatts.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number six, public comment. Are there any public comments to it?
He skipped agenda review.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Minutes, we'll write to agenda. Number five, agenda review first. Any comments on the agenda? All right, then if I have a motion to approve.
And Chair Blatts, we don't need a motion if we're just, if we don't have any changes to the agenda.
Okay. Well, then, are there any objections to the current agenda? No, all right. Then moving on to number six, public comment. Are there any public comments?
We don't have any public comment at this time.
Okay. The number seven, board comments. Are there any comments from any of the board members? Looking around, not seeing any. It doesn't look like there are any board comments. Then number eight, Air Pollution Control Officer, Lockie.
Good afternoon, Chair Blatts and members of the board. Couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with Senator Padilla's office. It was an introductory meeting to establish channels of communications between our district and the senator's office. So we discussed issues that are near and dear to our heart. And also, they related to me that the senator, his initiative, he's developing the Clean Commute for Kids program, which seeks to establish some funding mechanisms to transition school district buses from diesel buses to all-electric buses that obviously we would be very supportive of if it gets passed. But the meeting was a good one. As I said, it was an introductory meeting, and we agreed to keep in touch on a quarterly basis between us and them. And it was a good meeting. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay, thank you, Lockie. Any questions or comments from the board for our esteemed leader? Not seeing anything. And we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number nine, public hearing regarding the adoption of the Tora County Air Pollution Control District proposed fiscal budget for 2022. Final budget reading.
Right. So Chair Blatts and members of the board, I'm not going to bore you to death with the presentation. It's the same presentation that I shared with you at our last meeting. So this is going to be our second public hearing. Nothing has changed. We have not received any public comments. And just to refresh your memory, our operating budget is at $8.7 million, $2 million less than what it was last year, primarily because most of the building renovation-related costs have been incurred. The budget before you has a cost of approximately $1 billion. But there are mostly one-time costs and investments, if you will, to continue our modernization efforts and necessary for our operational efficiency improvement needs. Once you take out those one-time expenses, it's essentially about balanced budget. Part of these costs also include perhaps the last installment on our building renovation in the tune of $285,000 set aside to upgrade the parking lot. We, our fund balance is in a very good shape. Financially, we are stable. And our fund balance is 20%, 25% better compared to what it was last year. And through the implementation of this budget, we anticipate that it's going to be even better next year. On the personnel side, we are keeping the numbers the same. We are adding, we are proposing to add one fixed-term FTE for two years to assist us with our incentive programs. Our incentive programs are growing, and we need some additional help to effectively implement those programs. And also use this additional assistance to solicit additional incentive funds from both the state as well as the federal side. As I said, it's a fixed-term position for two years contingent to how the program evolves. And that concludes what I needed to mention. And we said we are recommending that the board approve our proposed version for the next fiscal year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Lockie or anyone else? Okay, given that this is a public hearing, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing. And if there's no further questions, then is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Zaragoza.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Zaragoza, please go ahead.
I just want to thank our CEO for the Pollution Control District for an excellent budget this year and all the staff. You know, I know they worked pretty hard to bring it down to a number that's very reasonable and very conservative. And also, thank again, thank him again for the new building. It's taken a long, long time to build, that potentially is going to save us quite a few dollars in the long run. So I come in lucky, you know, for the good work that he's done and all the staff for that matter. Because, as you know, you and I and Pollock and the rest of the folks worked pretty hard on this. And the rest of the board for supervisors and others on this matter. So I just want to commend him for that, make a motion to approve the budget.
All right, it looks like Zaragoza on first, and was that Edmonds on the second?
Yeah.
Thank you. We have the roll call.
Board Member Edmonds. Board Member Huber.
Yes.
Board Member Levere.
Yes, and thank you, Lockie.
Board Member Long.
Yes.
Board Member Parks.
Yes, thank you.
Board Member Pollock.
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez.
Yes, and I agree with Mayor Zaragoza. Thank you.
Board Member Rollins.
Yes.
Board Member Zaragoza.
Yes.
Chair Blatts.
Yes. All right, well done, Lockie, and thank you to the rest of the staff. We know it's no small task, but another year in the books on a solid budget and keeping things where they need to be. No kidding, it has been a lot of work on that, on that building, and we're not actually done with it yet. I think it's going to come up here again in a second. Next, first before that, number 10, adoption.
Chair Blatts, if I can make just one comment, thank you very much for the kind words and the accolades. And I wish I can accept them all, but actually, it has been like some of you had mentioned, you know, a giant effort. I want to thank all my management team and especially Nancy Mendoza, who is our fiscal manager, and her and her team have done a terrific job, actually. who is our fiscal manager and her and her team have done a terrific job actually putting the whole thing together.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments? Okay, moving on to number 10, adoption of a resolution approving one-time equivalent fixed term position allocation of the air quality specialist one for a fixed two-year term. Locky, do you have anything further on this?
Just as I mentioned in the previous item, we just need the extra help to assist us with the expanding incentive programs. And this will accomplish that. It's a fixed term for two years only, for the time being.
All right, so at least for two years and we'll see after that. Are there any questions? Not seeing any, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, Mr. Rollins?
One second, this is Matt.
Supervisor LeVere? We have a roll call?
Board Member Edmonds?
Yeah.
Board Member Huber?
Yes.
Board Member LeVere?
Yes.
Board Member Long?
Yes.
Board Member Parks?
Yeah.
Board Member Pollock?
Yes.
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board Member Rollins?
Yes.
Board Member Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Blatts?
Yes. All right. Moving on to number 11, approval of and authorization for the Air Pollution Control Officer to appoint Alan Ballard as an extra help employee following his retirement to fill a critically needed position related to time-sensitive state and federal reporting requirement.
Right, so Chair Blatts and members of the board, Mr. Alan Ballard was a supervising air quality specialist who retired back in March. We would like to bring him back for a few hours a month for the next few months to assistance with, he was working on a number of time-critical town sensitive projects, inventory-related projects and reports that we have to submit to the Air Resources Board, to the USCPA that are related to the state implementation plan as well as the air quality management plan. And there are quite a few calls on the, on the air and we don't want any one of them to hit the ground. So by bringing him back, he'll be able to help us out with that effort. We did hire a replacement for Mr. Ballard, who just started a couple of weeks ago. Two weeks ago. But we intend to utilize Mr. Ballard to cross-train our new hire. And we think it's going to be a very good investment. Normally, we don't bring these things back to the board, but because Mr. Ballard retired just a few months ago, technically I need to get the authorization from the full board before I bring him back.
All right. Are there any questions?
I'll move to approve.
Huber, second.
Does someone see you have a question or are you just trying to?
No, I do, I do have a question. Our present executive director is also the monitoring manager position. And this is not directly related to this, but I was hoping for bringing in the positions. Was going to ask if there is a time that he would be relieved of that additional task.
I can respond to that question. We did open the position up a while ago. And unfortunately, as of now, we have not found a suitable candidate. And this is why I'm filling in as an acting manager. It's, my workload got a little bit more, but on the bright side, we are saving some money for the district. In the long term, we would like to actually find a suitable candidate. And we'll try, both ways, we'll try the internal route to see whether we can train an internal candidate. And alternatively, we'll continue looking outwards to see whether we can find some talent outside to bring in. So we'll try both pathways.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, how many hours will Mr. Ballard be in this temporary position? Will he be under what the 960 hours?
For sure. It's going to be, what we were thinking was maybe 10 to 12 hours a week, so around 40 to 50 hours a month for the next few months, for between now and the end of the year. So definitely way below the 900 hours.
So he doesn't, his retirement isn't earned?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think one of the things that Locky mentioned there that this is critically needed position in a time-sensitive state and federal reporting requirements, which I think is really important. And I think the question about the 99 hours is another good example. I don't think he'll ever read that, but with the 12 hours or so a week, but.
We'll be extremely diligent that we stay way below that, that limitation. And besides, we, we don't want to hurt Mr. Ballard, you know, by jeopardizing his, his retirement, his pension.
I think it's important that you mention that it's a time-sensitive position, reporting position requirements, and you need him and he's got the experience.
Exactly.
Extremely important. Thank you.
Well, you can, you can try and leave, but you can never get out, right? Let's see, well, we'll find out here in a minute. Do I, I think we had an initial motion Supervisor Ramirez, if I recall correctly?
Huber, second motion.
Okay, LeVere, or excuse me, Ramirez and Huber?
Board Member Edmonds?
Yeah.
Board Member Huber?
Yes.
Board Member LeVere?
Yes.
Board Member Long?
Yes.
Board Member Parks?
Yes.
Board Member Pollock?
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board Member Rollins?
Yes.
Board Member Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Blatts?
Yes. All right, well, welcome back, Mr. Ballard. And don't, you know, don't over welcome your stay of 960 hours. Number 12, approval of the plans and specifications, including addendum number one for the Air Pollution Control District site improvements, parking lot and sidewalk repair, including a waiver of minor bidding irregularities and the award of an authorization for the Director of Public Works Agency to execute a contract to Toro Enterprises Incorporated of Oxnard, California in the amount of $269,106. Find that the project is categorically exempt from the, from CEQA and specification number CP21-06, project number P1621003. Locky?
Excellent. Can I, I have a few slides on the, on the, on this particular item. Can I ask Mia to upload those slides if possible? And this is an item that I briefed the board several times. Our, in the absence of slides, perhaps I can do it off memory. Our parking lot is in a state that desperately needs some some care. There are craters, crater-sized indentations on the asphalt that present a safety hazard, not just to our employees, but also to our tenant and their patients. And we had a couple of accidents, you know, in in the past. So we desperately need to upgrade the parking lot. Oh, there it is. And go back to one, one slide back, just to show you a few pictures. You can see on the left-hand side, you know, the indentations, how big they are. And suddenly they presented a safety hazard. We are also required to update, upgrade the sidewalks and our ramps to ADS specs. In fact, we received a temporary permit, conditional permit from the city. And one of the conditions was to upgrade to ADS specs those ramps at a date certain. So we can go to the next slide. So we are working, next slide please. So we are working with our partners, the Public Works Department, the County Public Works Department. And we invited bids that, we received six bids on the invitation and ranging from $269,000 all the way up to $437,000. And the one that had the lowest bid that we are proposing, that we entered a contract with is Toro Enterprises in the tune of $269,106. It's a local company, an Oxnard company. The total project cost is at $362,000. $20,000 for the design, $40,000 for the engineering and project management, and $269,000 for the construction contract. And we are setting aside $33,000 just for contingency purposes. Included in this amount is an optional additive alternate bid of $20,000. Our next door neighbor is a church, the Church of International Outreach and Fellowship. And we are sharing a an easement with them. And we are going to be using their, a portion of their parking lot because we are space constrained in our building. And we are both trying to be very good neighbors. And they've been wonderful to us. So we need to upgrade a portion of that common area and a portion of their parking lot. And that will cost $20,000. The church is willing to participate in some level of cost sharing and very graciously are offering $8,000. We believe the remainder of that would be a very good investment for us since our employees are going to be using that part of the parking lot. And the estimated project time, well, the contractor is required to start work within 28 days. And from the commencement of the work, they have 60 days to complete the upgrade, the parking lot upgrade. So by the mid of August, by the end of August or no later than mid of September, we should have a brand-new parking lot. And that will be our very last major capital outlay that we'll need to invest in upgrading our building. And the only other remaining portion is perhaps the EV charging stations, which will come right after this parking lot. Or perhaps even simultaneously with the parking lot upgrade. And with that, our recommendation is to approve the specs that are included as an attachment to this board letter and authorize the Director of Public Works to enter into a contract with with Toro Enterprises and also make the finding that the project is exempt from CEQA. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Oh, by the way, if we can go to the next slide. Okay, so this is the plan basically. You can see the ABCD building and all the parking lot around it. And to the upper-left corner of that plan is the area that is within, as part of the church's property that we are proposing to, to upgrade.
Locky, I have one quick question. What is the date certain under the temporary permit that the work needs to be done, if I heard that correctly?
Well, we had 90 days to complete the work and we are abiding up against the 90-day clock. But we believe through the board action and the approval of this contract and the sign of the contract will secure an extension to that 90-day. And we should be legal.
All right. Are there any other questions, Ms. Edmonds?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, one second, Mr. Zaragoza, Ms. Edmonds first.
Just wondered if you could give me an example of what a minor irregularity might be. I was trying to think what that would be.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch your question, the minor irregularity?
Yeah, the question was, what would be an example of a minor irregularity as is referenced in the agenda?
If there are any typographical errors, for instance, in the contract, you know, or on the specs that are attached to to the board letter, that you are authorizing me to take care of those. Changes there.
I thought perhaps it was an irregularity of the surface and I couldn't figure that one out. So thank you very much.
Sure. Mr. Zaragoza?
Yeah, I'm not trying to be funny here, but what is the PCI, the current PCI there at the parking lot?
What is the?
The payment condition index, the PC, the condition. I'm just joking with you, Dr. Locky. Probably, it's probably about a 20 and should be maybe a 70 or 75, but but I, I think it's much needed because like you said, it's a safety issue.
It is a safety issue and we are going to rip not just the asphalt, but we are going to be going down three to six inches depending on the location of, of the parking lot. Just to make sure, you know, that it's sturdy and we have the right drainage. And we are not going to be having the same issues that I guess this building has experienced with the rains years past.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair too, you can also potentially avoid litigation.
Absolutely.
And so forth. And I'm really happy that you're working with a church. I think that's really important for additional parking, so.
Absolutely.
As long as the church isn't bringing in larger, you know, heavy trucks or anything like that to a parking lot, I think we're all good. Mr. Rollins?
In future budgets, will you have it set for like, you know, the slurry sale it like every few years so that you maintain the work that you've done?
That's a good question. And frankly, we should. I don't know what the frequency should be, but you are correct, you know, every so often, every so many years we may need to, to upgrade, you know, at least, you know, the upper level of to resurface perhaps, you know, the asphalt. That's a good suggestion.
And some of that the county may do in-house as well. I don't know if they, I know some of those types of resurf the slurry stuff, they might, I assume public works might do themselves and we can work something out with them as well. Are there any other questions at this point? Okay, not seeing any, then is there a motion?
So move.
All right, Mr. Zaragoza?
Second by Pollock.
Second by Pollock, we get a roll call please?
Board Member Edmonds?
Yeah.
Board Member Huber?
Yes.
Board Member LeVere?
Yes.
Board Member Long?
Yeah.
Board Member Parks?
Yes.
Board Member Pollock?
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board Member Rollins?
Yes.
Board Member Zaragoza?
Yes.
Chair Blatts?
Yes. All right, well, it sounds like in a very appropriate sense, the last thing that has to go into this building to get everything completed are the EV chargers. So you got to like that. Once, once, once this, once we get the parking lot redone, we get those in. And then maybe we'll be freed up enough where we actually get to cut a ribbon outside for once in a while, because it seems like that. I'm not a big pomp and circumstance person, but you know, I'll tell you, we've gone cooped up so long, it might be nice to cut a ribbon outside.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is there anything else by any of the board members or by staff? Not seeing anything, let me ask you this, when is our next meeting, you know?
July 13th at 1:30.
July 13th and to everyone, we will be back at 1:30. This was a special, special version of the meeting today, a little later than normal. So we'll be at 1:30 on July 13th. With that being it and not seeing anything else, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.